Accusative planning commission on November 18th, 2021. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please introduce yourselves, starting with Doug, please.
Doug Buntz, Town Planner.
David Vickney, member.
Rick Ellis, member.
Brian Dishance, member.
Mark Sanrizio, member.
With that, your business, we start with discussion. Proposed zoning article for zoning district use with the businesses' commercial district. A possible land A. Are we doing this? So what are we doing? Discussion is related to development of land. Applicant proposed to add an applicable zoning district to the pool of town meeting. This project is represented by attorney John Markey. Do you have anybody here for that?
Yes, sir.
Please be kind enough to introduce yourself.
Sir, John Markey, on behalf of Rick Miller. And I do know that you have gotten small packets. I do have a couple of things that are additional to that that I could supplement. I don't have a hand in this thing. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to step out of the meeting for a second.
Is this another one of those?
Just wanted to be careful.
You're giving us tough, brother, you know? It's tough. We want to meet somebody.
We keep missing you.
Every time we turn around, you're gone, brother.
I think that this will be relatively efficient, so hopefully you get to see the Patriots tonight. So, in essence, Rick Miller owns where presently was the accusative facility, is now Gifts to Give, the factory down right by the river, as you cross Wood Street from New Bedford.
Gifts to be titleless.
You got it. I saw what you're saying.
Make it easy.
All right. There's also, along with that parcel, with the titleless parcel, there's a bunch of undeveloped land that he is interested in potentially doing something with. Some of it is land that he's spoken with the select board about possibly giving to the town that would add to a bike path along the river and walking paths along the river. Some of it he'd like to develop that is further inland or upland from the river that abuts the mill facility. It is a, the first thing you need to know is that it's in a zoning district that is, there are very limited number of parcels in the town that are in that zoning district. He's got his area that's down there. There's an area out by White's family that is farm that is, that is within the same zoning district. We would like, and we're proposing that you consider and that the town, considering the select board, has a broad concept was in favor of exploring it. Modifying that zoning district to allow for multifamily housing. Our view is that area of accusative, I just stopped at the captain's place for a delicious steak sandwich myself on my way here, is much more cluster housing than you see in the north side of town. If you're going to allow multiple family developments to basically count towards your estate requirements and you want it to be in a manner that's consistent with it, we think that coming with a more focused zoning change that would permit multifamily housing units that would be in that area. That's the way it was presented to the select board in the spring. They asked us to, you know, basically say, well, follow the normal steps presented to the planning board. We recognize it won't be during the Christmas, the wintertime agenda, but it might be on the May agenda. Doug said he wants input from you guys to know, is this something that you think is a good idea? The select board wants input from you. Obviously, you not only have the statutory right to comment, but it's something which we think you may want to decide, how do you want to phrase this? I understand that there's been some talk about a, on over 55 that would be townwide. Our goal is to have some potentially over 55 in this development, but not exclusively over 55. To basically be consistent with this neighborhood and to do the project. We would like to do it in conjunction with creating open space that would allow people who live in the upland area to get down to the river, that would allow other people in town to be able to utilize this open space. Separate from this parcel itself, we also have some space on the other side of Slocum Street that's right along the river, that's currently parking, that we've been talking with the town about whether they could accept as part of this overall project as either areas that they want to connect to a park or a bike, or just use for public parking for people who want to go on a bike path. And all of this is kind of conceptually designed with the idea that Rick would be able to invest and create some housing units that would be different than what is traditionally in accusative, but in the area of accusative that makes the most sense. So that's the big overview picture. In order to do that, in essence, the ask that we have is for that limited zoning district to potentially modify the potential uses and create a definition that says multifamily housing can be done in that area with a special permit. So that the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, whatever is the wish of the people in the town, has the ability to say, yes, you can do this in this district only, but only if you get our special permit. That's the whole pitch. It's all laid out in this packet. I don't want to go into detail because there's other folks that are waiting. And I know no action's going to happen tonight. But I'd be happy to take your comments either tonight, or afterwards, you can give them to Doug and Doug can give them back to me individually, whatever you prefer.
Let me start with this gentleman. This is something that we have to look into.
Hundred percent.
This is a five-minute gig, okay? This is something that has to go to town meeting. Won't go to town meeting till the spring, somewhere in that area, am I correct?
Yes, so they canceled once your town meeting. They're going to go forward to spring town meeting. We're going to have to have at least two public hearings on the matter.
Gentlemen, make a motion to discuss this.
Can I say something?
No, you can't say anything at all, John. Please introduce yourself.
John Golda, seven Slocum Street. I'm totally in favor of getting over 55 because I noticed, living in the town, most of the residents who are 55 lose one partner. They end up moving out of town because they can't find a place to live, or they're handicapped of one way or another. We need one-bedroom apartments for the elderly. Veterans, another, another big source that we have. You can't get into the housing authority in Accusative because of that, you have to put in the application. It goes to Boston, and anybody who wants to come to Accusative could fill that vacancy.
You're talking about presidential tariffs?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but the downside here, I don't want multiple rental properties in there. It's going to put a tax on the school departments, trash, police, all the, all the town facilities. With the 55 and over, do not put any burden on the tax base at all. Nothing is affecting the people, and we're doing something for the town. That's all I have to say about that.
You know, we will have two public hearings for this.
Yes, I just, I saw it on the agenda and I just had to come in and...
No problem. We are welcome, welcome, to what you'd like to say.
That's it.
Gentleman on the board?
I'm just looking through the stuff that we've got here. I mean, my, right off the top of my head, I mean, obviously there are things that Mr. Miller has in mind that he would like to do. I'd love to see, you know, at least a conceptual plan to show the area that he wants to develop, what density he wants to develop in, you know, how many units he's looking for on that parcel. Yeah, you know, not cast in stone, but just to get an idea. And then, on the same plan, show the areas that he's willing to, you know, dedicate to the town next to the river, you know, across Slocum Street or whatever. That would make it a lot easier to, to deal with, especially on multifamily issue, which is always a hot item in this town.
Understood.
If there's some kind of proportion that he's looking at over 55 versus just everybody, you know, again, I'd like to see that. I think that would be something that's got to be rolled into the ultimate zoning package. It can't be a carte blanche to do, you know, all multifamily housing, any age, you know, as many kids as possible, kind of a thing. I mean, a lot of that is going to be determined by the actual unit. I mean, if it's all one-bedroom units, well, there's not going to, I don't care what the age is, there's not going to be a lot of kids going out.
Exactly.
You know, going out of that. If they're, if they're three-bedroom units, you know, catered towards families, well, then, you know, those units are going to be high impact on the town. So, you know, I certainly like to get some sense of, you know, what he's looking for.
I can share this with the board. Yeah, I mean, just so that the board is aware. We presented this in the spring, and we had a particular concept to the select board. We did receive comments from the planning department. We did receive comments from the building commissioner. And so, we've talked about having things potentially spread out more. One of the factors that I think the board will probably want to consider as they're doing this is density in that area of the city where you have town water and sewer might be able to be a little more so than where you have to have septic and you got to have, you know, wells in other parts of the community. I'm not, we're not here to dictate. We're here with a concept. Mr. Miller has no immediate plans, but it's something he's had in mind for four or five years and has talked about, and we know before he can start to spend money on engineering in a significant way, he needs to know whether it's something the town is open to. And you are an important part of that process, as are the neighbors, et cetera. So we, before he starts to spend thousands of dollars on getting engineers to make things more real detailed, he, certainly we could do some conceptual plans, and we've already done two different ones, in part in response to the comments from the town. We're open to that.
And that may, that may be sufficient. Again, that, you know, that's, that's an important thing.
Yep, understood.
Against the, the density and the character of the neighborhood.
And I think on the over 55, he's definitely open to being partial over 55. The concept he was talking about was that there would be between 40 and 50 total units when we get to the end of the day, and having a portion of them over 55, whether it's 25%, 20%, 50%. Ultimately, it's going, we, our proposal would be to give either the zoning board of appeals or the planning board is going to look at it to say there's a requirement of a base minimum. But then it's within your discretion to say, if you like the project, maybe you just keep it at the minimum. If you think that the person's being too aggressive, you can require more. It's within the discretion of the board down the road.
Because it's a lot easier just to incorporate it into the article right off the bat.
Understood.
Because to, you know, for us to get stuck making judgment calls, you know, with neighbors on one side wanting some things and neighbors on the other side wanting other things and, you know, it's, it's a difficult position to be in.
Understood.
When you're asking to, you know, pit neighbor against town, neighbor against neighbor, et cetera, et cetera.
Understood. All I was suggesting was if you said something like 15% minimum, then we know it has to be that, but you could come in and say, for this particular project in this particular location, we would take 25%.
I mean, off the top of my head, I think all single, all single bedroom, you know, over 55, that's, that's a, that's a winner.
Right. And then, and then the question is, is he...
So where do we, where do we go from there? I don't know that that's viable or not.
That's the point.
Yeah.
It's a balance.
I, I would, again, the, that's the easy call. You know, over 55, all single bedroom units, then, then we're golden.
Right. And then it may not get built. That's the quite challenge you're making, right? So it's, it's figuring it out.
There needs to be a, a share.
Right.
You know, 15% over 55, you know, I've been also, I don't know that that does it for me. You know, that's, that's more like a straight multifamily operation.
I'm not, I'm not, I was given an example. I'm not here to negotiate today. I'm just trying to put the concept out.
With that, gentlemen, keep moving forward.
Okay.
We will discuss this, if that's what you want.
Absolutely.
We'll give us some time. We know it's not going to come in till...
A spring town meeting.
...a morning town meeting.
Right.
Okay. Is that what you're shooting for, sir?
Absolutely. And I think probably just for efficiency sake, all your comments that become the dog thing, come back to me, I can deal with it individually.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
With that, next one, 120 Perry Hill, Mr. Dubois.
Dubois.
Of course. I can make copies of them.
Please come and introduce your handsome selves, sir, and tell us why you're here.
Russ Dubois, 120 Perry Hill Road. Doing is just putting the lot line back. So this right here is a...
You got any more than one of those?
No, I have, this is, this is just a plan that you guys approved in 2016. So what I'm doing is, this plan here is I'm just changing the lot line back.
Oh, you have that?
Oh, you have that? So if you look at this here, see these lot lines here? That's mine right there. Because what it was, was the house currently right now, this line is not there. So it's, it's the house and then it's all, and all of the, so I'm just putting this back, this lot line back in here.
So it's just a form A?
It's a form A.
Yep.
You got all the paperwork with it?
Yes.
Okay, look, you got it?
Pretty straight.
It's simple and sweet. Gentlemen, you all look at the MyLAW and make sure it's okay. I presume they're both the same? Is that correct? What are those? How many of those, how many of those we got? We're supposed to have nine.
Yes, sir. Those are all the copies of them all.
Okay, take them all because you're going to have to sign them.
There's an over on the property, septic on the property. Setbacks are setbacks, okay? I forget the side setback, this setback. 15, yeah. And that's not an issue, obviously.
Looking good.
Yeah, so actually you're, you're incorporating this into the rear, the rear land, and you're taking this out of the rear land. That looks like what's happening here. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so what it is is...
I mean, this previous plan showed this and the rear land all being one.
Correct. Correct. So then, once I sold that, there's another plan that created this here with that, and this house here had all of this.
Yep. And then this lot now gets incorporated into the rear land.
Correct, yes. So when this plan was done, this house wasn't built yet. That helps.
This line's a little different than what shows over here.
Oh, there was another piece that was, that was sold off over here as well. So this to the gentleman that owns that parcel.
No, I don't have, I don't have a problem. Making sure to sign the plan as presented.
Do I have any questions? Is there a second?
I made a motion, sir.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with Rick, Brian, and Mark? With that, we have the MyLAW. We can sign the MyLAW. And do we have nine copies? Or eight copies?
Nine copies.
Okay, put them all together so we can sign them. Would you like a coffee? Sure. You're going to take the MyLAW?
Yep.
Take the MyLAW to the registry agent and be kind enough to give us the paper to pay.
I have no idea. We'll find, we'll find, that's yet to be determined, I guess.
David's probably...
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry. That's the slider. Never mind.
It's good. We're keeping them separate.
What's the date today?
Good night.
You too.
Nope, that's no problem, brother. Sorry for the lull in the action. Anybody got a good joke?
No.
Come on, Teddy, you got to have a good joke over there, huh?
I bet he can say on camera, "Pardon me."
With that, if the folks are here from 16, 18 South Main Street, really?
We're going to do 301 Perry Hill first, just because of...
Okay, you're the boss, man. Just tell me what to do.
Oh, boy, Dave, you're going numerous times.
With that, 301 Perry Hill?
Say no.
Please come in. You know who the handsome faces are, but please introduce yourself and tell us why you're here, sir.
Mark Francois, 301 Perry Hill Road. A continuation, I guess. Last meeting, we had sent a copy of the easement to town council. We have since then gotten a response from town council regarding the easement, everything.
Yes, so they did, they had one comment, but you and your attorneys were working with the town council to resolve the issue. In response to... Actually, you guys have all the copies of the easements. So you have a copy of the easement that was approved by town council. Even on House, I'm including the one with his comments on it.
So in English, what's it say? Town council is all set with it?
Yes, they, like I said, they had a few comments, they were working with Mark's council, and they resolved the issues that were in the easement and agreed with town council in 2029.
And that, this is the easement, that's the final?
Final copy is right here.
Time to hear this, the word perpetual. That's a good, that's a good designation. Well, their private easements only last 30 years unless there's something that says I'm surprised I didn't include successors and assigns.
No, I think on the bottom it does say...
What's that?
I think at the bottom, the very last paragraph says successor, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So, come on. That's, that should be fine. Never trust him with a piece of paper. He'll never get it.
Gentlemen, you're all set? Lawyers are all set?
There was one other issue. It was Form D covenant, so it was release of lots. Also, had town council look at this because it was going to be a potential issue. Mark's council came back, and they agreed to town council's comments, and they got all the revisions they needed to within the Form D. I also included this information in your packets as well.
And that was, he was requesting a release of one lot before it builds the road? Is that the...
Originally, yes, but now they're including the three lots within the covenant.
They want all three of your lots released?
No, no.
You hold all three lots.
We'll hold all three.
Okay. All right, then that's, that makes it, that makes it easier.
Yes. Sorry.
Sorry, just got the paperwork today. You got to give us a little break here. So you don't want, I thought you wanted a release of one lot, sir?
I did, but to, by going back and forth with town council and my council, it seemed that it would be an issue.
Easier just to build the road and...
So it would be easier to just hold all three, I'll build the road, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Fantastic.
The only thing that you left us to sign these plans is a little, they were not signed last week.
I get the MyLAW here for you, but the MyLAW has to wait until after the 21-day field period, correct?
Yes.
And that does not happen until you send a letter to the town board?
She received that.
Fantastic.
So that, clock started ticking on that. These need to get signed.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, very hot to his glasses. And then you have the MyLAW as well.
They're saying if it blocks in the wrong place, it's all over.
Flexing you up.
Do we have to sign any of these easements, or that has to wait until the end?
Oh, that's not so long, I believe.
I'm sorry?
I don't think that's so long.
Do we keep the MyLAW until the 21-day field period that we sign, correct?
You can sign it now. This decision's already been made. I'll just hold on to it and bring it down to the clerk's office.
Okay. You all set with that, Mark?
Good with it.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Would you like a copy of the easement?
Yes, please. Please, yes, of course, please.
Have some of these down there at the end. Should be the top line of Tom Todd, which is probably the most senior.
Form of deposit of money.
All these are My Laws?
I assume.
With C V E solar.
Yes, yes, so they already actually have their good deposit submitted for this project.
Okay.
So that's already all set and one across the street, they're in the process of posting that. And then, they were actually ready, they sent something to my office last Monday from New York. The easement there since. We should really comply with everything, understand as far as issues. I guess their sense right now is, what else are they gonna do?
Satisfied that they have the offer.
I believe their O and M plan is out for your review right now as well.
Very little cooperation to not pull the effort.
Yes.
I would like to keep it that way until.
I think there was a big disconnect there between engineer and then C V E themselves. Because they got screwed along the way with their engineer. And the contractors that actually went up to the site didn't work, so. Now that they have one point managed by their company dealing with all the issues, they never look here.
As all set for the next one, I can sign and do the same thing. Which one do you want?
Sixteen and eighteen South Main Street.
Sixteen, eighteen, South Main Street. Please come in and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Mark Gomafol. From God's to sixteen, eighteen, South Main Street.
Why are you here?
What would you like to do?
Yeah, I have the plan. He has nine actually. And then I have all the application materials here. Thank you.
Oh, he's zigzagged, huh?
Perfect, thank you. Are these all copies that you're gonna be describing? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, I can signature and listen to you at the same time, sir.
I'm just here for the plan to, I was asked by Doug to provide some documentation regarding the ages of the buildings and the property. So I was able to get the documentation through the town records. For the house, it was through Patriot Properties, it was built in, I don't have it, nineteen forty-two, I believe. There's a permit for the, what was used to be the service station, that was nineteen forty-seven, I believe. The field card refers to the house, the service station, and the garage. And then there's also a permit for addition to the garage in nineteen fifty-four. So, I'm under the impression that needs to refine this for what I want.
So what are we actually doing?
Separating the three buildings into three separate entities.
You guys are smiling, you're already up.
That makes more sense than looking at that. What does that have to do with what he's talking about?
For sixty, 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 yeah, I want to say sixty-three, four, five, something like that. Yeah, it was early sixties. Remember exactly.
Is it right?
Yeah, that's right. Been a lot of things, sir.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It was vacant for quite a while, so. Cleaned it up.
Yeah, the store was good.
Yeah. Appreciate it, thank you.
I don't have any problems. Three different buildings, no one building lots being created. I'm assuming this is to be able to sell them separately for financing purposes.
I don't see myself being a landlord. It's not my thing, so. But I like the idea of having the storage, so.
So just coming, one, two, and three, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? You have a My Law?
He's there for, he's right there. That's what you told me I need to do last time.
You need to do that.
Alright.
When you do, be kind enough, as you get to the back of the page, please call Doug.
Leave the town page for the chair.
I will. No, it don't make any difference. We don't care. Chair means nothing in this group here. Except if it's more money.
Hundred times you are, yeah.
You did a beautiful job over there, it's a real nice stuff.
I appreciate it, thank you. People actually stopped when I was working to say that.
Yeah, it looked like.
It's one of the first things you see when you come in, right?
Yeah, I mean, both that and the old gas station, I mean, they looked pretty decrepit for decades.
Yeah, yeah.
Sad seat, but it's worth the seeing. Those containers, I was passing over the fill those.
All set?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You put a date on it now?
Is that dated? Is it dated on it? Is it dated? What's the date today, eleven what?
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Guys, pretty much all set? With that, zero and one sixty-five Nice Lane.
Good evening, gentlemen, Robert Naiser with our Renewables. This is a continuation of the meeting we met on a Saturday, I don't know the exact date, at the site. I'm here with the owner Ted Chopper and his aunt, she's not present, but she's the owner of the other properties. I can give you a quick overview of what's happened since we met on the site. We have engaged S W Cole as the town consultant. They reviewed our engineering plans. They provided comments for us. We responded to them and it did, I think the one trigger that I was gonna, that I revived, that would cause a revision of the plan. Let me just show you up here closely, and I'll have to turn this over and see. This was the original plan right here, with the single drainage well. The revised plan with, after the review by S W Cole, they're asking for a second drainage well here on the northern property. Some of the drainage calculations did change slightly. But we've responded to them, we've provided a decommissioning bond estimate to them. And I think we're, as far as the engineering review. If you haven't heard back from, I don't know if Doug, if you've heard back, I assume that they've reviewed it, but I'm not sure. I was hoping that they would have reviewed it and have a response to us today, but we haven't heard from them.
Not yet. I know there's another few other projects still waiting on to.
Do you know if they'll get to us by the next meeting?
They will. Takes a little gentle lunch.
What is the bond in, what's the count, what did you come up with?
Fifty, I think, I believe it was fifty-six thousand dollars.
How many panels?
One thousand eighty panels. And then the other, I guess we met on site with some of the neighbors, if you recall.
Yes. The visual barrier from the roadway across the street and then the abutting property from our back porch.
Right, those were, I think those were the two, the two areas that were up concerned. There was also mentioned, you know, there was sound from the transformers. Traffic was an issue that came up to and from the solar site. And I think those were the, as I recall, the objections that I heard from the neighbors. Plus, there was, you know, just generally, there was a feeling that the land should not be used, it should remain farmland. But I think that's a decision that is up to the landowner. But those were the, that's what I recall as objections to the project.
Gentlemen?
Just for future use or future consideration, possibly for this one. I'm not quite clear as to what would trigger the release of the money from the bond or from the cash deposit to the town or whatever. I mean, is there, is... I guess what I'm saying is, you know, ten years out, twenty years out. Everybody's gone, the panels are still there, they're not working anymore. What's the mechanism that the town has to trigger the release of the money? To the town or another contractor to demolish the thing?
The finance lady or the committee or, they, I believe they have a scenario that they want to do. Each, now, each solar array has it, they have to put X and Y money in for decommissioning. It's not a bond anymore, it's cash, am I correct, Doug?
Yes, but she did accept the bond for all the projects, so.
Okay.
But I still have, I still have the question as to what triggers the release of either the bond or the cash? You know what?
Who says it's fine?
Yeah, who says it, who says it's going to come out of there and we're gonna rip the panels out?
I think it's Doug.
Just, I believe that there's an agreement between the town and the developer. If there's a default in the agreement, I think if you look at the agreement, there's terms of the agreement. If there's a default in the agreement, I think that would trigger the town's action. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, when I think about these things, you know, a lot of times it's gonna be ten or twenty years out that it even becomes a question, that something isn't in writing, it's just going to be a real fiasco trying to get it released to someone.
Sure, yeah.
And likewise, if the, if the quote developer or the person who's entitled to the money twenty years out takes everything out, what, what's the mechanism to release the money to them?
Right, yeah, I would agree, I think that's a, that's a good question. If the project is satisfied, I mean, I guess my understanding as the developer here that if the project is satisfied, it's decommissioned, you know, is there a review? As I look at the letter, I don't know if there's anybody that goes in and certifies that it's been decommissioned in accordance to whatever plan. And then, you know, how do we get our money back? Because ultimately, we'd want to get our money back at the end.
If you're the ones that are, you know, literally taking the panels off and restoring things, yeah. And that's all I'm getting at, I don't have the answer to it, but I know that there really should be one. Just, just as an aside, I mean, we, a good friend of my wife's, she had solar panels put on the top of her house and the agreements run out, the panels are still working, and the people that did it are gone. So, you know, in her case, it's like, she, I guess she holds them until they don't work anymore and then she has to tear them down. I, I don't know, don't have the answer. She doesn't have the answer to that, other than they're still working and she's still getting a break on her electric. But there will come a time when they don't work anymore. Someone will get stuck with a house with a roof full of solar panels and that hopefully doesn't leak.
This is a, is this a lease agreement?
Yes.
So, you're the developer?
Yes.
So, who actually, will you be involved in, your company be involved in, you know, the maintenance of mowing the grass and making sure the panels are fine?
Sure, we're the developer, I mean, I think ultimately, like a lot of the projects, we own some of them and retain some of them. Some of them, we sell off to other, to other owners. It's, it really is an investment vehicle at a certain point. So, I mean, our plan, I think we'd like to hold on to these, they're good systems for us, it's a good size for us, we'd like to hold on to them. But I can't guarantee that we're gonna be the ones who are holding on to them long term forever and ever. I mean, I think that would be, you know, can't say that. So it is, I mean, that's part of the solar business, that projects get bought and get sold. Depending on circumstances, that there's people that want to hold them for the first few years for the tax credits, you know, the federal tax credits, and then they want to sell them off. And after that period of time, some people, or mostly it's big, it's more companies and pension funds and things like that, they want to hold on to them for long term, for the security from the income flow out of it, so. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Another reason why I liked it on our end, to see some wording that. Another reason why I liked it on our end to see some wording that our lawyers are happy with. You sell it to somebody else. You posted the deposit.
Right.
The thing gets decommissioned, it's get, gets torn, torn, you know, disposed of, reconstituted. Who gets the money?
Yeah. I thought you said I can get the money, but I think if, if we did sell it to somebody, you know, generally you'd have to have an assignment of all the, they're going to look for all that stuff, assignments of everything. But it's a good question and I think from my perspective, anytime there's clarity between the town and the developer, more clarity, that's always a good thing. So everybody knows where everybody stands.
It really, it really is because from the town's perspective. Certainly we don't want to be in the position of releasing the amount of money to the current owner. And then the previous owner comes in and says, where's my money? Yeah, and now, now we're in the middle of a shouting match.
You've been there too many times.
Well, I, I can just see that happening. You know, anytime there's money involved, it always, it needs to be spelled out ahead of time.
Just one comment. I mean, I think adding, putting a cash bond in there is a little bit unusual, my experience anyways. Maybe it's, it's typical, but I see more bonding agencies take, you know, where you have a bond instead of a cash entity. And then there's a, you know, there's somebody at the end of, on the other side that is managing it. That's not going to release or pay.
I understand. I mean, with subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
Yeah, with subdivisions, generally we're talking about a shorter timeframe.
Right.
You know, the people build the road, they sell the houses off, you know, five, six, seven years later it's done. And, and normally the, the person that starts developing it ends up with it.
Sure.
This can be twenty years out and it could have gone through four or five owners. Yeah, and, you know, there, there needs to be some kind of, I'm not, I'm not the lawyer. There needs to be some kind of wording or some kind of mechanism so that when the time comes, the town can just say, okay, we're releasing the money to X. And if it's, I don't want to get in the position of trying to, trying to decide who's the successor or the sign for that, that portion of the sale, whether it was ever done properly. I mean, those are the things that can end up in court and cost thousands of dollars to resolve. There's got to be something out there that, that clarifies that. I would just ask you to do a little research and see if we can come up with some standard wording from Dartmouth or one of the surrounding towns, how they've handled it.
Absolutely.
And on that, we have, we have a screen challenge with this one also?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Where the front is, the road goes down, all the way down and then cuts across and goes back from Nice Lane.
There's a fence that goes all the way, is there?
Excuse me?
The access, the gravel access right there.
Yeah, but there's this, you want screening in front of both of those sites, right?
Essentially, yeah, so in front of here and in front of here.
All the way across.
And I know there's already a hedger over here, but.
That's a shaky hedge.
Yeah. Really should go all the way across with it.
If you want to put a berm, put it four footers up or you want to put six footers up, it's your call.
So you're, you'd be looking for a continuous screening, screen across the Nice Lane, the west side of the array then?
Yes.
Okay. And to what height with the berm, with the?
It's your call. You want to do a berm in four footers or you want to do six footers?
Yeah. Okay, if that's an option, I'm not sure which one you want to do because.
It's your call. I'm just giving you, it's probably easier to put a berm up and put.
It may be, but, you know, I think we have some berms and squares already in there. So I'd like to defer to the engineer so that we can take a closer look at it. We don't want to be diverting the water anywhere other than what's already been agreed to on the site. So, so that's one of the concerns. I would, I would want to just take a look at that. And I guess my other, I think it was actually Mr. Ellis that brought it up, is that, you know, the screening may be better. We don't want it right up to the, close to the solar panels. That's not good for us for solar. If it could be, you know, twenty feet back from the solar panels, is that acceptable? Or do you going to have distance?
As long as it's a screening.
As long as it's a screening.
Do you have any questions on that one?
I just, the fencing around it?
Yeah.
Am I correct in that it's the slotted chain link or is it just open chain link?
It's just open chain link. That's what we proposed, yeah.
So what, what about, what's the height of the top of the panels from the ground surface? Just below, just below the, the panel?
This is the back edge of the panels, about ten and a half feet to the, to the back edge of the panel. Front edge is, is about maybe two and a half feet up.
Yeah, it's the, it's the top half of the panels that seem to be more, that stand out. It's for the ones that are closer to the road. I mean, that's set back from the road quite a bit and it's down. It's down in elevation, so I, honestly, I, I don't see that other than leaving up the trees on the south side of the property. You know, that there's going to be much screening from even a ten-foot-high fence just because of the grade difference. I mean, you're going to be on the road looking down at, at those panels, so. Even an eight or a ten-foot-high screen, I don't know if it's going to do too much. It may, it may screen the first twenty-five percent of the panels, but it won't, won't screen the back half.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only way you would really get a screening is if you put it up on Nice Lane. That would be the, the only way you could possibly, you know, possibly screen everything.
I don't know if I agree with that because you've got quite a hill. There's going to be a break point.
Yeah.
If you're like this and panels are here, there's certainly a break point. You're not far away up the hill.
Potent, yeah, potentially. I guess I'm not exactly sure where, where that would be, you know.
They had suggested that there was a few trees on the southern side, but that didn't cover up too much. There was a gentleman there that was doing some farming and stuff, but it should be screening that goes all the way across.
Straight across, yeah, so there is, right, so there's maybe forty or fifty-foot screening right here. But if you guys would be happier and the town and the board would be happier with a continuous evergreen screening across, then that's what we will do. We can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be much better. I, I would think that would be a lot easier for, for the choppers rather than trying to depend on the hill and that goes through the center of its property. Is that what you were talking about? The, the hill, the break in the hill? Where's the break in the grade as you go from the street down to the solar panels? Because I thought it was pretty continuous downhill.
Yeah, I think it is continuous. If you look at the, the topo lines here, it's, it's a, it's a steady grade the whole way. I don't, I don't recall and, I mean, I don't know that it's pretty, it's slopes continuously, right?
It's straight grays to the back there. That's my recollection too. Just that bush line that is on the south side there is just, you can see right through that pretty basically in a lot of spots. It's not really that, it doesn't really cover that level. That's why we were thinking more of going right across with it. How high will those panels tolerate some screening on the south side?
On the south side here? I mean, you know, I think we're, the, the west side, you know, is, the south side? I mean, how, you've got a panel that the leading edge is two feet. You know, depends on how high they grow, I guess, I suppose. Because if you start with a six-foot, you know, within ten years or four or five, it could be fifteen feet tall. So over time, it's going to provide more and more shading. I guess that's always a, always a concern.
You're going to always cut the tops of them.
Yeah, we could, we could. It's true. Yeah, we could. I, I, and I don't know if there's a.
The bottom's like balls to the deer.
Supposedly there's some, some of those arborvitae that the deer don't like.
That's right.
Well, I guess one of my questions is, do you have a preference for a type of evergreen? Because we've had, you know, everybody seems to use arborvitae, but I mean, there are other options out there as well, so.
If you think you're deer resistant, go for it.
I think, well, I'm not the arborist, but we could, we could look at other, other options.
Yeah, I mean, and of course, and the, and the idea is ten years out. If you have to top them off at ten feet tall or whatever the magic number is.
Right.
You know, that certainly would be probably the best way to handle it.
Sure, you top them, I mean, they just grow wide.
My, my, my neighbor across the street tops his every year.
Yeah, they are gorgeous. And those are what, twenty feet high?
I, yeah. The hours he spends on that are unbelievable.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Okay, so you're going to come back with us? You're going to have a proposal for a particular kind of tree plant or planting? And then I would like to see, you know, what the, the cap on the height. You know, obviously you're going to want it capped off at some point.
Right.
Let us know.
Okay, what our, what our.
So that the person that goes out and trims it doesn't trim it down to four feet high.
Okay, so it would be on the west side of the array and we'll give you a height that they would be not to, that we would want not to exceed.
Well, the west side shouldn't be a problem. It's that south side again that, and that was some of the concern from, from one of the neighbors.
Okay, so west side and then south side here?
South side in particular. You know, whatever can be done to fill in that area from, from you. Me, I can put trees, really not do much there in covering anyway. You've still got that tree line that goes down, what, forty, forty, fifty feet high?
Yeah.
Was that on the south side there?
Yeah.
That's where the stone wall is right along that, right along there.
Right, so.
I think the major one is.
They were talking about selective trimming, so that's not how that.
Okay.
But the major one is going across the front side.
We'll come up with a plan, a screening plan for you to consider and we'll try to be creative. I'm, I'm not crazy about arborvitae just because I'm not sure that, you know, we'll, we'll look at it and we'll, we'll see.
It doesn't have to be arborvitae. You know, deer resistant is something that's going to fill in, you know, along the bottom is probably wherever the evergreen stuff is better, obviously, for screening because it's there all year long.
We'll get some advice and we'll. Okay.
Are both lots under the same ownership?
No, so one is Teddy Chopper's and the other is his aunt Frances Mills. So it's, they're two separate agreements, two separate lots, two separate owners. But the development is sort of one parcel really.
I'm just curious because you have, you have two non-conforming, legally non-conforming lots. And if they were under the same ownership, they'd come and merger a lot of them come into play, but they're not, so.
Okay. Why is that non-conforming? It's a non-conforming lot, this one?
Well, neither one of them conform to the furnace requirements for a building lot.
Okay.
Build a little house lot.
You have to have a hundred fifty feet of furnace.
I think they both, they both do have a hundred fifty, as I recall.
This plant has one twenty-nine ninety-eight on one lot and nothing on the other.
Anyways, I mean, that's, that's not for, I mean, I'll have to, I'll look at it, but I thought they were one fifty.
They're pre-existing.
Yeah.
Separate, they're separate ownerships at the very, at the very worst, so.
More curiosity questions?
Sure.
All right, so you'll do your homework on the screening and our agent will do a little homework on the prying the money away from the developer.
Okay.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Anybody from the audience like to say anything? Question? Just introduce yourself, please.
I'm Mike Chopper. You say that the top of the panels are ten, ten feet off the ground.
Yes.
Have you ever considered, I was driving down the west end of Bedford last week and, um, behind Hetland Rink, I don't know if they call them low-profile ones, but, you know, I don't think they're no higher than three feet off the ground. Did you ever look at that one back there? I mean, there is options and bring them up ten feet. I don't know if the boards ever looked at it, take a right by it.
The panels, the panels.
The panels are, I don't know if you call them low-profile.
We have the solar arrays come from, and what particular company has? Some have them low, some have them high, depending on that, am I correct?
It, it is. I mean, I think it depends on the, the area that you have to work with too. I mean, I think that if you.
Sun's in the sky, so.
That's true, but if you, if you imagine this was just flat on the ground.
Then it'd be pointing up. If it's pointed like this, these would be pointing more towards the side. You probably, they'd probably operate better if they were low.
Right, I, I think it would be, you know, they're at a, right now they're at a twenty-five degree angle. That's it. So that optimizes the, the.
That brings it ten feet, but if you ever look into, I don't know if the board would consider. Take a right by Hetland Rink, they're behind them, they're very low. I mean, there's a four-foot fence that, you know, it's a chain link, you can see them, but you can see how low.
So like he says, depending on the degree of the panel is what gives, optimizes the panel itself?
Correct, correct. But, you know, they're low to the ground, that's all they, you know. Not like the ones that are in your backyard where you put the six-foot fence in the.
Near the high school in Bedford.
Lubeford High School.
Yeah, it's like kind of in the back parking lot.
Is it a diagram? Is there no cross-section in the plan?
I do, I, I think on the plan that we submitted to the town, if there isn't, I have one here. I can, I can get one for you.
Who's the, who's the, for that cross-section?
For instance, the next project, the Wing Road, we're going to discuss. Do they have a specific cross-section on the plan?
Yeah, there, there is one, I think. Did it, does that include it in that?
They'd have an older section.
Yeah, let me just, maybe, it may not include a section. I mean, we, we need one for the permit set, but, uh, the building permit. Let me just see if I have it here. Well, this set doesn't have, this doesn't have it. I mean, I can, I can get one and I'll bring it with me next time. If that's okay.
Sure.
I mean, since we're talking about height and.
Yeah.
This concerns with the abutters in the site from the road. I think we should have something in the record that reflects what we're approving for height.
Sure.
So it doesn't come out to twelve feet or down.
Yeah, absolutely. That's fine, no problem. I'll, I'll make sure I have a, a cross-section plan when I come with the, with the screen.
Um, Joey and Chopper, I just want to thank the board for taking my concerns and the consideration about the screening and everything. I really appreciate it because I'll be looking at it every day. Thank you so much.
We're trying to help so you don't have to.
I know, I don't want to and I don't want to hear it either.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Doug, you all set with everything we have to do here?
Yes.
With that, is there a continuation until the next meeting?
Can we continue?
July twenty-twenty-two.
Um, so just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. If I, should I get the plan to Doug in advance? How, what's the best way to do that?
It's the best way to do it, yes.
Okay.
Because then, then we can talk to him. I mean, we'll just be seeing it that night.
Yeah.
But he'll have seen it before.
Sure.
Give us an explanation from his direction.
Okay, very good. All right.
If you could do full-size copies to the office, but also PDFs, some of us like PDFs.
Sure.
It's easy to distribute.
Yeah, that's no problem. I think we've been sending everything PDF to Doug anyway, so. And I can even send a PDF of the engineering drawings for the array. I'll send those to Doug tomorrow. He can get those to you right away.
Great.
Okay, very good.
December, what do you want to do? Sixteenth?
December, that's a bad one.
Okay, July, July twenty-twenty-two is probably. You want to go January, skip the month? I don't care, I couldn't care less.
I'm going to need one in the summer. Twenty-fourth? You may not get a quorum.
Sixteenth to the ninth. You can go to thirty if it's New Year's Eve, we'll be all drunk.
Sixteenth, I don't remember, sixteen, I mean, the ninth is too soon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixteen. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, sir, I just have a request, just call us all because some of us forget sometimes.
No worries.
It's my fault. I apologize immensely. All right, with that.
Wayne Lane.
You guys are all set? Everything's all set?
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a great evening.
Teddy, happy Thanksgiving to you. You got any turkeys?
Yeah, you too.
You got any turkeys over there, Teddy?
No.
No turkeys on that land?
Oh, you can see them in the morning.
Yeah? Discussion, cease and desist issues for ground runs and solar array?
Jesus Christ.
How you doing?
All right, not exercising enough.
Yes. Don't like us all? No, no, no.
More deer resistant than others, but nothing's completed.
All right, nice to see you guys. You take care.
Yep.
Are we doing cease and desist?
Yep.
Was zero and eighty-eight we laid or just two?
Zero is a typo, it's just eighty-eight.
Is that why we have this gentleman here?
I believe so.
That's me.
Please be kind enough to introduce yourself.
Sure, my name is Eric James, I'm with CS Energy, but I'm here on behalf of CBE tonight, they did not make it, so I came to discuss the matter on the cease and desist.
You had some talking with Doug?
Uh, yes, so I was speaking with somebody directly from CBE, they had sent somebody out, they had ordered the cease and desist.
Yep.
Um, they have been extremely cooperative and compliant with our requests in terms of the screening and the actual work they've done to the site since.
The billing inspector, zoning and loss board, officer yourself, correct?
Yes, so, so Jim, Jim and I felt the, that putting the nylon screening on the fence would be sufficient enough until the plantings do grow. Um, there is a life expectancy of at least five years. In addition, they did come initially and they wanted to stop the screening about a third of the way down the abutting property. There has been some Smith entry removal along this edge over here when they did the fencing. However, they have planted twenty-one trees since then, those are obviously never mature. Um, so I did get back to them, I said, we will, the planning board would like to see the nylon fence extend all the way to the edge, that back edge of the property. So, those are my recommendations. Additionally, I know Pat is dealing with the O and M currently, so I think he's just waiting to hear back from the review engineer. Other than that, on Jim's end, I believe, everything is good and I did hear from this property owner and I think the screening and then the planted trees should suffice, should be sufficient for a visual barrier.
Okay. Any idea when we'll hear back from Pat?
Relatively soon, I think he is.
I'd like to hear back from him before we say everything's all hunky-dory, go. Go do some more, what, what remains to be done on that project now, I've gotta stop by there and take a look at it.
Um, so they, they did clean up all the berms, they put the mulch down, weeded everything. Um, actually, when, his name was Worcester, he was here last week on Monday, he said they were prepared at that moment to put the nylon fence up. Um, so they're pretty much good to go as long as they have the board's approval to do the nylon fence and everybody's comfortable with that being a visual barrier.
It's to protect the neighbor.
I guess.
Well, my concern is, I like the idea, but the electoral expectancy is five years, right?
So. That's correct.
So let's just say, I mean, the more.
Five years down the road.
We'll say three and a half, okay, they start, the stuff must break down and tear, and the stuff is gonna end up in the wetlands and the woods and the neighbors' yards.
Sure, I understand.
What surety do we have at the town that somebody's gonna go in there and clean it all up at the right appropriate time? Furthermore, what if half the plants die? I know that Rochester puts in, they require a bond for the plantings. So it doesn't last long, but long enough to know that they're gonna survive. And I'm just, my concern is, five years from now, we got shredded stuff flying everywhere and
Yep.
and we got half, forty percent of the trees died and, and we got a hell of a load. Who, who is responsible for, you know, how do we get somebody to do something about that?
Sure, um, I'll just start with, you know, with all due respect, I came here a couple of months ago, I don't know if you guys remember me. And I think you say, you know, verbatim, it was Jim Meredith, our eyes and ears in the field, satisfy Jim, satisfy us, right? So that's exactly what I did, right, and I got, I got a building permit signed out from Jim for the work that we did in the field. Now, I understand, there's concerns with the screening, understandable, I mean, it's a two, two-foot firm and it's approximately four-foot trees around the way, but I get it, you know, it, the visual aspect of it, so the implementation.
The people that live in the back have been there for twenty-plus years and for them, well, stepping out of their front door every day and seeing solar field, for them driving down the road every day and someone's seeing solar field, five, ten years down the road, they go to sell their house, what does that do to the property value of their house?
No, understandable, absolutely, and so what I'm, what I'm saying is, I think that this is a viable solution in the meantime, as the trees will grow.
I agree.
And so, um, you know, I have a fence contractor, I was, I was really gonna do this, I just wanted to make sure we got approval before I did anything. Um, and we have, we have no, you know, opposition to doing this, it's perfectly fine. Um, the contractor can put this fabric kind of intertwined in between the fence mesh to an extent, it's a relatively, you know, um, I guess robust material for the most part, you know, it's a polyethylene, it's not like, it doesn't rip and tear that much, I, I guess, you know, I, I couldn't guarantee anything, but what I could maybe think of is we could include an aspect of this into the O and M portion of what we're doing with the Conservation Commission, I know it doesn't really apply, but we currently have an O and M plan in in the Conservation Commission's hands right now and SW Cole is reviewing it, so it's already been given to them and part of that O and M is, you know, access road, basins, swales, lawn, you know, mowing, stuff like that, just general maintenance and the.
Is there an escrow amount for that?
There, there will be, once it's approved by SW Cole, so once that's approved, there will be a surety, which I believe is the surety that was mentioned in the cease, in the desist. It said decommissioning bond, but that bond was already previously provided, so I think it was mixed up with the surety. So that surety will be issued once the plan and the approximate cost is approved via SW Cole. But what I could say is, you know, I know we're, we're trying to do this, you know, as quickly as we can, obviously, with you guys' approval, but what I could say is, maybe we could put a O and M aspect to the fence, just, you know, even if it's just like every time they come in to mow, they take a look at the fence and make sure there's no fence ripping off, no fabric ripping off, no debris cleanup, if, if there is something in place, if there is something kind of thing, that's like the best I can think of offhand, um, for assurance.
What kind of surety is packing required for the O and M?
As far as cost?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have the, the number off the top of my head, um, but we got it estimated from the O and M contractor who's gonna be taking care of the facility.
Okay.
So they budgeted it out and they provided that to, to SW Cole with the O and M plan. It also has some like the stormwater certifications and stuff that was previously not done through the cushioning bylaws, which was missed on a few projects, I, I believe at this point, but, um, I guess that's, that's my offhand proposal for how we could potentially keep up with it. Um, I don't know if that sounds reasonable, but as far as like, you know, other solutions, this is a very, very common thing we've seen, screening.
Oh, I think it'll work.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I, I think it'll be fine.
Sure.
You'll screen it from the neighbors, but five years is here like nothing.
Right, right.
Or it says up to five years, so, you know, my just concern is three years.
CD said, you know, they're willing to, if for some reason or another the trees are not acceptable after five years, the, the screening would be replaced.
But what's our assurance?
Well, that's why I'm proposing no one happening, I guess.
They're out the door, you know, who do we call?
Right.
Nobody, nobody answers that number anymore, I'm just.
Trying to think ahead.
It's just a surety.
When you're asking people to actually spend money out of their pocket, it gets more difficult.
When you don't have any leverage on them. No, I don't really understand. Well, that's why I think maybe putting a, a, you know, budgetal portion into the O and M might be a reasonable, uh, solution, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you right now, installation of this around that entire field is not, you know, it's not a crazy expense in comparison to some of the other things as far as O and M and other things, so it's a reasonable thing to implement into the surety, I think. I'd have to talk with the CBE and their O and M contractor and make sure that they can include that and put a solid number on it. Um, other than that type of assurance, I guess I could, you know, I could talk with the fence contractor and take examples of previous projects or something and the materials.
And the planting, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Survival of the, because, okay, we take care of one, it doesn't do anybody.
We haven't answered the other thing yet.
Right, if, if the trees, I bought, just for instance, right?
Sure.
I, I don't know how many years ago it has been now, maybe seven, eight years ago, you know, the deer eat the bottom of my arborvitae, so I went and bought little ones, right? I bought them at this tall, guess how tall they are? This tall. They haven't grown an inch, I have no explanation for it, the deer don't eat them, they just don't grow, so I know you have bushes in there, some of them are this tall, you know, so some arborvitae, they, they take root in a row for a year and, you know, you don't have arborvitae four feet on center either. There's a, on the, it says evergreen, four feet on center on the plan, I looked at it, arborvitae's like ten feet on center, and then there's an offset bush that's about this big. So I'm only concerned with what are we gonna get in five years and if it, if it's not there, we need to have a fund where if we can't contact somebody, we can have our DPW or somebody go down there and, and put in.
Put in new bushes.
Hundred, hundred bushes if we have to.
I will say, um, the, the plan you were going on, was that the original submitted plan, cause I know there was a revision based on like UMass pollinator.
The plan I had was the ones in Portland.
The ones that are staggered, kind of, with the two different species, it's not just.
I don't have a plan of that.
Okay, well, maybe that, that could be part of this, uh,
Yeah.
problem, well, I'll, I can get that over, but regardless, I can tell you that our company has a two-year warranty on these trees through the contractor, anything that dies, well, that's just as far as like, um, you know, our responsibility to replace them as the contractor.
Why don't we just put up a ten-foot vinyl fence?
No, I just, I just meant in regard to our owner, you know what I mean, they, they have the O and M portion, but we'll, after we give them the project, we still warranty that over two years after it's in their hands, but on top of that.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, we can, we can talk with them about something that's, well, I don't think that's an unreasonable request to have, one, surety that the fence screening is gonna stand and if it's not, then it needs to be replaced, two, that if the trees haven't grown, that the fence screening will be replaced after the five years or however long it needs, and then three, that any trees that die throughout the lifetime of the project are replaced accordingly. And if they grow great, if they don't grow, then they keep the screening up, you know what I mean, they keep re-implementing the screening kind of thing. Um, that's like the best I could think of at this stage in the game, you know?
I don't have a, have you had much contact with that abutting property owner down?
Michelle?
Uh, not much, you know, Jim, Jim had, um.
I've, I've talked to her quite a bit, I've been over there probably ten times.
It may, it may make some sense, you know, not the whole fence, but a good portion of it as it abuts that property owner's property to not do nylon, do the slats, the old slats that they put in. And then you don't have to worry about the thing coming apart in, you know, three years or four years or five years. I mean, it looks like there's only one section of it that's really, uh, would really be a problem visually.
Yep.
And of course, the higher the fence, you can get it on the berm, and the, the better.
And we, we did plant additional screening trees in her, her property, we put twelve-foot arborvitae.
I drove down three quarters of the way and bought a lot of them and I saw some pretty sizable.
Yeah, they're big, we put them in there now.
It looked like they, they put them on like.
No, no, that, yeah, that was.
Cause they're on their property line, you know, clearly, but that's, that's good, I applaud you for that.
No, we put, we put more in.
That's front and center right out the window.
And last, last I talked to Michelle, I mean, she seemed happy, especially cause we came back and did all that for her. Um, and I don't know, did you guys mention the, the screening fabric to her?
Uh, no, I, I kind of, Jim was talking to her and sent the email over to me and then I kind of gave the response, uh, the planning board's considering putting, uh, requiring the proponent to put up a screening nylon on the fence.
Okay.
So, she hasn't gone back to that email yet, so.
She hasn't, okay. Okay, cause yeah, last I, I, she seemed happy after we finally got the trees that she wanted replaced in there, cause we had, it was the whole green giant thing, that's what I was telling the gentleman who just left. Green giants are like the most deer resistant of the arborvitae's, none of them are really deer resistant fully, but we, we put the green giants in and she seemed, seemed happy after that, so. Um, you know, I'm, I'm here to support CBE, our goal here is to obviously not receive a cease and desist and we wanna work with the town and building department and planner to, to do so. Um, I think we're just looking for, you know, a reasonable solution moving forward that we can implement here, um, like I said, I think that as far as the Conservation Commission stuff, that stuff is underway, I have necessarily no, no concerns about that following through in the next few weeks here, depending on how SW Cole happens.
He actually has it through Beals and Thomas right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just Beals and Thomas.
Yeah, yeah, so they're, they're gonna probably get that back to us a lot quicker.
Cool.
So I should probably hear on that next week, I do kind of agree with the aluminum slat idea for at least that portion of the fencing that you had mentioned.
Yeah, because the next one would just be there forever.
So if you soften the nylon over here.
Okay.
Pretty much, right, so if you soften the nylon right here and you continue all the way down with aluminum slats.
Yeah, I think that would, that would go a long way to appeasing the deer issue and the, the planting issue on, on that property.
Okay, and Doug, is it, are you guys okay with this section that's outlined here, stopping here, does that sound reasonable?
I mean, like realistically, either way, you're gonna pretty much see that portion on.
When there's a two-hundred foot, he's within a giant substation.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing on that side, this, this, this person of all is concerned.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The way that diagram is fine and, um, I, you know, I think it, it's a good idea, you put it into the O and M for solar.
Right.
Um, but there's gotta be some sort of, there's gotta be money put in there for that specifically and outline that for that specifically for.
Yeah, it would be its own line item, like, you know.
Number of trees that are planted, a rough cost if, you know, reasonably half of them die in the five-year timeframe.
Okay.
And, and, and for, in five years, the idea is that all the plantings are of reasonable height and we don't have to replace the.
Right, cause they're.
The screening on the fence.
They're growing.
Right, you take, you take down the five-year life, shelf life and call it a day.
Right, right, no, that's.
You know, I think that's the whole, so somehow write it into the O and M, you know, submit to the plan.
We're gonna want a hundred grand on that.
And, um, you know, while I'm here, because in an effort to like, you know, when we do these types of installations, um, oh, this isn't even the right plan, actually. About across the street, I know this meeting's not about that, but I did see the, the address on the agenda.
Oh, that was a mistake.
No, I know, but I was just thinking, you know, we're gonna have a similar issue over there, I assume, when we're looking to sign that project up in particular, is that if I'm doing this installation, it's nice to do it in one shot kind of thing, and I figured I'm here and.
It's a zero.
Yeah, it's right across the road.
Yeah, so I don't know if you wanna look at this, it's one that's right across the street, um, so there's currently like kind of a berm up, there's like a gap between the fence and the roadway and there's a berm up over there, uh, there's a cluster of trees right about this area right here. Um, nothing up over here, and there's also the other solar field, this is down here.
Right.
And it helps that the leading edge kind of comes to a point right there, but they, they've done a great job with arborvitae's along the back edge over here that abuts these properties. So I don't know what we'd like to see up in the middle.
Ideally, you come down the street and go, you know, halfway down.
A portion of the way down, that's what I'm saying.
You know, you, the visual of them driving down to their homes, they see greenery and it kind of.
Right, right.
Takes their eyes off of the back end.
No, that was my thought too, was this section along the road similar here and then a portion maybe to like the end of the road?
Same as what you're doing here, yeah.
Yeah, so like how you have the gap over here, same thing, like where the, the roadway ends over there, yeah.
Okay, okay, that sounds reasonable, I think, um, and no, you know, no need for any sort of, you know, aluminum or robust slack on that side of, like Michelle.
No, no, I think.
No, I mean, that's, that's the power lines there.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, no, I think that's, that sounds reasonable, uh, like I said, I appreciate that, cause I can.
Kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, exactly, cause I'm, I'm gonna be coming back here at some point and arguing over that project, so.
I can work in this neighborhood right here.
Oh, yeah, well, this is Gilberto, he's very satisfied with those arborvitae's. See, he put in a while back, those are, you know, that was done what, ten years ago? More than that, yeah.
There used to be a barn here and this was basically all horses and stuff and, and cows and stuff.
The good old days, huh?
Yeah, I mean, that was, it was beautiful to drive through there, you just didn't, you didn't even notice the high tension because, you know, it was all farm field, a nice farm back here. This has gotta be, if somebody were, you know, still living here from forty years ago. It's quite a shock, yeah, to drive down there and see that now, but it is.
So you guys, you're all set, we got this all put together?
He's gonna come back with a, with an O and M plan, he's gonna come back with some money, uh, put an escrow for a bond, I mean, a bond would work for something like that, cause it's short-term.
Okay.
And, um, just to make sure that two or three years later, when half the things die, uh, we can get them replaced. Usually after the first two, usually after the first two years, it's pretty hardy, yeah. You'll lose some, you'll lose some the first year. You'll, you'll lose some, you'll lose some the first year.
That's why we try to hold the two-year warranty on our contractor, because we, we've noticed that's typically, once you get past that like two-year, they usually
Usually they root in, and, you know, barring some exceptional drought or something like that.
Right, right.
Which we did not have this year.
No, no, definitely not.
But you could like some of it.
Yeah?
Yeah, I know, nowadays
It's extreme now.
It was, it was like a summer day out there today, so.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, wait till tomorrow morning, you won't think so.
And, um, I was up at a project in Maine, we have some Maine projects, and it was, uh, snowing, I was in snow, yes, man.
I miss it.
We all set?
Yeah, I think I'm good, I will, I will, yeah, with CBE, do everything, thank you guys for your mail, here. Do we need to, um, you know, put this on the agenda for the next meeting, how do you guys wanna work through these next steps?
Put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yeah.
So, it'll be December sixteenth.
December sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. Alright, gentlemen, well, thank you very much, appreciate it, go Pats.
Oh, that's right.
I'll see you in a month.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.
Last, signing documents.
Yeah, there was like a clerical around this one, um, so the certificate of action, certificate of approval had two different names for the project proponent. Um, just need the, uh, planning board to re-sign the documents. For this, so.
Is this a mess-up?
Uh, yes.
Okay, cool, no problem, we all, we're not perfect.
I don't even know where it is.
The cannons and that applies at road.
That's the one that goes over the
Oh, yeah. How long, uh? That's the fire chief and the other fire chief.
Someday I'm gonna catch up with Pat on my, my story about my, the beginning of my job in Braintree.
That was great.
What's that?
You were telling us that up to the site, I thought one sixty-five, but I didn't believe that.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Uh, just a quick, a quick little update.
Go right ahead.
Uh, I interviewed three candidates for the clerk position, hopefully making a decision tomorrow. Um, master plan, open space and recreation plan. I started to contact some companies, uh, in the process of, uh, talking with Serfet as well, just to get some cost estimates of what this would be, what the town's looking for grant-wise, and what we need to bring in for money for that.
Should talk at fifteen to twenty-five grand.
Um, no.
Higher?
A lot higher. Well, realistically, we wanna do both of these at the same time, just cause how much it's gonna cost, they're both extremely out of date. There isn't a ton of readily accessible data for the town of Acushnet in some specific areas. Um, and looking at some RFPs of similar-sized communities around Massachusetts and southern New England as a whole, I was looking around ninety thousand to, yes.
You're gonna see that happen.
Um, so, well, realistically, it's gonna be pursuing grants that'll cover the cost of this. Um, so it was, right now, I was just kinda getting a preliminary idea of how much we're gonna need in grant money just to be able to pursue this. I talked with one of my former professors, he actually owns a company that, they, they specialize in this kind of work as well, so it was a good to see, and then I also received, um, a letter from Pam, this one's for you, Mark, it's kind of about the need to fill the, the board's Z, I don't know. Whereas, I guess, everybody, you're all set at six-thirty, like six-thirty is a perfect time of night for everybody to be here.
Works for me too.
Okay.
Does it work for you?
Brian's one that works all the time, so we gotta work around his schedule more than likely.
Well, David's still working.
What a help to do.
Yeah, so I was, um
Like, can you do a plaza?
Yeah, so, I think we can, we can do the Zoom, uh, it's just a, the board is selecting, they have their meetings at four o'clock, so, pretty much right after. And then like their, their meeting will end after about an hour, it's five o'clock, and then they have to get back on to Zoom at six-thirty to do a meeting, so it's just kinda working out the timing and the date.
Yeah, but I don't have a problem with the Zoom meeting for that, I mean, I've got the facilities to, to do it.
Cause you can do a call-in too, like if you're on the job.
Yeah, just call instead of video.
Yeah, it's just, I'm, my time is all like, all over the place, and it, it ends sometimes sooner, sometimes later, I, I never know, it's just, it's a function of what goes on.
And we're doing well, you don't have too much more coming in, right?
No, I was hoping this is like the
Okay, so that's, so at least we got four, four out of five, we're not doing bad. With that, we'll discuss their motion.
So, gentlemen?
Yep.
Motion, adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.